Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council and Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, January 12th, 2010. The clerk, please call the roll. Oh, all right, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance first. Would you all please stand and join me in Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bill de la Peña is absent at this time. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Mayor Gillette?
Here.
Item four, request for continuance, any public hearing or agenda item. Closed session, item 14D, Shato, S-H-A-T-O Holdings will not be heard this evening. That's correct. Anything further, City Manager? Thank you. Special presentations and announcements? We have none. Public comments, item six. Clerk?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the City Manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for City Council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Two people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. Our first speaker this evening will be Mr. Doug Tapking. Doug, good evening, followed by Debbie Gregory. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Douglas Tapking, the Executive Director for the Area Housing Authority, and I live in Thousand Oaks. Tonight, what I'd like to do is present it to you as a calendar that looks like this. And the reason we're giving this to you tonight, it's a 2010 calendar titled "What Home Means to Me." And the reason that you have it is if you'll turn it open, you'll notice that Mr. January is one of the residents from our public housing programs. You should be very proud because he is part of your program, and he is one of 300 students that submitted artwork under this national competition and was selected as one of 13, the 13th being the cover photograph. For him to make Mr. January was extremely thrilling to him. He competed across the range. We submitted five different applications. Four went to the regional level, and one was selected to the final route, and it was he who made that. So, the point to this again tonight is, is most of the time you only hear about bad things, and tonight I really would like you to know about the good things. He is one really great student. Again, I would say to you, please be happy, please be proud. This is the future that we have. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tapking. Good evening, Karen. Next speaker, Debbie Gregory, followed by Nick Kidway.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Gregory, and this is my colleague Elaine Hollyfield. I'm a proud resident of Thousand Oaks, and we are both board members of the National Association of Women Business Owners for Ventura County, NAWO Ventura County. And we're here tonight because we have a new motto right now called "Power to Business." And we'd like to invite the council, the members of city staff, and the residents of Thousand Oaks to our Power to Business Conference that's going to be held all day, Tuesday, February 9th. It's going to be held at Amgen's corporate headquarters, right here in Thousand Oaks. And I'd like to thank Amgen, who's one of our corporate partners and a company that embraces diversity and diversity suppliers. It's going to be a fantastic event. It's going to have great food. We're going to give breakfast, lunch, and a reception after. But more important, it's going to have great information and incredible speakers and tools and corporate networking opportunities. Let me tell you a little bit about it. We have some major corporations who are participating, including Amgen, Pfizer, IBM, and Union Bank. Panel topics will include securing your infrastructure and preventing identity theft, powerful advantages of business certification, and powering up your business financing, including we have a noted venture capitalist as part of that panel. Anna Rico Harvey, who is Director of the SBA's Office of Women Business Ownership in Washington, DC, will be one of our highlighted speakers. And we have renowned keynote speakers that include David Allen, who is an international lecturer and the world's leading authority on personnel and organization productivity, and Jim Cathcart, who is a celebrated author and award-winning motivational speaker. It is $99 for non-members. It is $79 for members. You can go to our website and register. The first 100 people that register will receive a free gift from NAWO. And that website is www.nawobc.org. We have corporate partners that are participating, and I'd like to thank Amgen, Metropolitan Water District, AT&amp;T, Anthem Blue Cross, Technical and Operational Solutions, and Union Bank. We invite people who might want to sponsor to also contact us. Again, that website to register for the Power to Business Conference on February 9th is Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Debbie. You want to give that one more slow time, please?
Okay, thank you, Dennis. It is NAWO.org. That's N-W-W-W-N-A-W, as in women, B-O, business owners, dot org. Oh, I'm sorry, it's NAWOVC.org. N-A-W-B-O-V-C for Ventura County dot org.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much, and congratulations and success. Mr. Nick Kidway?
I begin in the name of God, who's the most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Igbal Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, Director Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. Honorable Mayor, Council, another wonderful new year. I just wanted to draw the attention of the council to the budget, the story that was written in the Star, and it has some good pointers for you to think about before you spend another $3.5 million on frivolous spending. Taugen, in Oaks began the fiscal year, as you know, Mayor, on July 1st with supposedly a balanced budget, even though you started out with a $1 million deficit. To close the gap, the city suspended a grant program that helps sports group improve their facilities and hold off transferring money into the general fund into an account for open space. City Hall was just closed for the holidays. Oh, I'm sorry, for furlough, because there wasn't enough money. I mean, I thought you were in the public business and public libraries with the kids off from school, with people having some time off. That's where people like to go in civilized, good societies. They extend their hours, just like people in the retail business do, so that people can read and enjoy the public facilities, but they were all closed. In January, the city last year faced a $3.2 million deficit, which jumped to $6 million with forecasts of plummeting sales taxes. I predict, and everybody predicts, that it will be worse this year. Like, I can see the City Manager, another storm is coming, one tonight with a bigger one in the fiscal horizon. The city has contracted out the street sweeping. It's pretty disgusting, and there are 23 unfunded full-time positions in the library. Ms. de la Peña was quoted as saying, "I don't want to forecast anything, but I don't want to be in a position a year and a half from now that we have to look at layoffs." And after announcing that, she took a 10% pay cut. "We have not laid off anyone," Mr. Mitnick was quoted as saying. And I would just like to say, what is the definition of insanity? Pray tell me, what is the definition of insanity? It's doing the same thing again and again and expecting different results. I hope the council has learned from frivolous purchasing of unnecessary land and that you will be fiscally prudent and conservative. That's what people expect. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Under public comment, does the City Manager have any response? Nothing at this time? Seven, City and Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar. Pleasure, Mr. Fox?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I want to pull item 7M for the public's knowledge. That's the City Council's salary adjustment. It's on that consent calendar.
All right, fine. Something else, Mrs. Bill de la Peña?
Yes, I wanted to pull that very same item.
All right, it's already pulled.
7M?
Something else?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The other item is 7K.
7K? 7K and 7M. Anything further at the other end?
Just, you know, let's pull item 7I also for discussion purposes also.
And 7I. All right, I, K, and M.
And I'd move the balance to the consent calendar.
Okay. Any comments to the motion? Please vote.
That motion carries 5-0, and I just want to read the title for 7L, An Ordinance Amending the Municipal Code by Repealing and Adding Chapter 7 of Title 4 Updating the Flood Plane Management Program.
Thank you. Now, we'll go back to 7I. Mr. Fox?
7I is the expenditure for bicycle detection video enhancement project on Lynn Road. And I had a brief discussion with Mr. Mitnick. I guess, you know, the first thing is, this is a part and separate from the Lynn Road Committee. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And then, the other issue, just by way of, I guess, question, I recognize that we have bike paths on Lynn Road. I also recognize that if it's not the most dangerous, it's one of the most dangerous streets to ride a bike on, maybe next to Westlake Boulevard. And so, I'm not suggesting necessarily that we don't do this, but I'm just putting it out as a question. It's a main thoroughfare where we did successfully reduce the speed on Lynn Road, but in today's world where speed limits get in excess of 50 miles an hour, on that type of road, that we're all familiar with the topography and the bends, I don't know that it makes a lot of sense to have people riding bikes on that road, even in a bike path. A simple distracting somebody with a cellphone, which is a very common occurrence, can lead to a real catastrophic accident, and we've seen examples of that. So, I don't know if staff wants to comment on it. It's my understanding that this will provide some widening, which would actually increase the safety, margin of safety. It's just something I think council needs to look at. We've had a number of occurrences, Westlake Boulevard most notably, and also on Lynn Road. I think it's something we need to look at. I don't know if the committee evaluated this when you were looking at Lynn Road, but I do think it's something we need to look at.
Okay, as a non-agendized item, I can't, can I get comment on it? All right, who has? Okay, Mr. Watkins?
Certainly, a quick answer on this one. What this particular item is, is application for grant funds, two different applications. One for the video detection to help pick out bicyclists at intersections throughout the city rather than the in-loop, I'm sorry, in-pavement loops that detect cars. This provides video detection so the traffic signals, excuse me, can detect vehicles better. And then, the second is the Lynn Road bicycle lanes. Lynn Road bicycle lanes is under design right now, and that would be, in certain areas of Lynn Road, a narrowing of the medians or restriping to add bike lanes along the edge of Lynn Road. My understanding, we can talk with the police chief or others, is that bicycles are legal vehicles, like any other vehicle. And so, Lynn Road, if it doesn't have bike lanes, if it's just two lanes, then the bicyclist can legally ride in the right-hand lane. And so, by adding the bike lane, you are giving them additional room, additional safety. And then, the bicyclist at that point has to determine if they want to avoid Lynn Road, if they want to avoid some other roads because of the speeds, then they can choose to take a more, you know, meandering route. But in this way, we at least provide them a little bit more room. So, that project is under design. This is the application for grant funds to fund that project.
Again, I just, we've had a number of occurrences there. I don't know if it would warrant staff provide back to the council how many accidents have occurred on Lynn Road. We're not getting a lot of calls from them, but I know we've had occurrences. We actually had a former council member very narrowly miss getting hit and likely seriously injured or killed on Lynn Road while riding a bike. So, I just wanted noted.
Would you like to have it brought back as an agendized item?
I don't, yeah, unless there's no interest from the--
Well, let me ask Mr. Watkins, is there, what's the unintended consequence of continuing this and bringing back as a report?
I don't want to hold up the grant funding.
Yeah, this particular item is grant funding. The next time that we would come to council with this, would we would come to council when the design was finalized, and we'd say, here's the final design, and either we have funding, or we don't have funding, and here's how we proceed. And then, at that point, we'd be asking for authorization to go to bids, and if council's uncomfortable with that, or if the funding wasn't available, then that project wouldn't proceed.
Right. That would address your concern on? All right, Mr. Mitnick, you wanted to weigh in?
Yeah, and what we can do in the interim is answer the questions about the safety and the history of accidents and that type of thing.
Certainly. We could put together a memo for that, go to the City Council, yes.
Before I take this any further, because we have three items off, I overlooked, I had two cards, and I do have a speaker card on consent calendar, so let me do that first. And then, I'll come back to item I for an action. Mr. Nick Kidway?
Nick Igbal Kidway, resident of Newberry Park. Not my favorite idea of speaking on the consent calendar, but I'm forced to, the way it is. Number A, the minutes. Hopefully, the council will listen and join American fundamentals and provide minutes just like it used to be here, like Mr. Shallow is here. I mean, to have minutes that can be used in court of law, that can help people understand rather than just saying that Jim Baker appeared and was pro or con. I know there were bad times in this council when there was a lot of infighting, but that's all gone, so I don't really, there's really no reason except that you just don't want to join civilized society. I mean, even your planning commission gives the minutes in the packet so that people over here, when they are here already, it's just, I know it's on the internet, but internet is not the solution for everything. Number G, approved expenditure for 401 West Hillcrest Corporate Replacement. That is the former city hall that was supposed to be gutted and demolished. Thank God that you gave 15 minutes to a citizen and that that was saved from demolition, and we ended up spending taxpayers' money on this 22 acres that we did not really need. I hope you will think about this when you vote on expenditure of additional funds of taxpayer money, even though this hall is empty and people don't think that people don't care. I mean, this is one of the most important issues in the country right now, is to not spend money frivolously. That's why, I know some of the press and people talk about council salaries, which is number M. You're not paid a salary, everybody knows that, but how come, I mean, who's writing these agendas? I mean, it's a stipend. It's an embarrassment to say that it's a salary. It is not supposed to be a salary. And in fact, I would appreciate if some real issues of having a full-time mayor or a paid city manager, these kind of issues should be on the agenda. That's what is needed to be done and discussed. Maybe the status quo is what people want. And number seven, the 3% increase. I mean, who's negotiating these contracts? I mean, you did not anticipate that this economy would be so bad that sister city of Simi Valley and Ventura have cut the salaries by 3%? I mean, how about the top dogs in the city taking a 25% increase? That's what leadership requires, not just a freeze on the income. It's disgusting what is happening in the city hall, and it's unbelievable that people just want to watch Sarah Palin and Fox and not come over here and participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to item, item I, pleasure of the council. I'm going to take them one at a time as we go through.
That's fine. I'm satisfied with staff bringing it back through the normal course.
Okay. Motion to? Motion to approve? Comments to the motion? Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. Item K, Mrs. Bill de la Peña?
Thank you. Item K does deal with the issue brought up by the Speaker, which is the salary increase or cost of living adjustment of 3% for city employees for 2010 and 2011. I have always had my concerns about a 3% cost of living increase, when in fact, the cost of living right now is below 3%. And not to take away from the wonderful work that the city employees do, but I need to explain that I cannot support this salary increase over the next two years based on the current economy. I don't see that that is actually fair, so I will vote against this.
Thank you. Additional comments? Is there a motion?
I'll move approval, but just to note, it's outlined in the staff report, this is an existing contract. This is not a new contract. This is an existing contract, part of a three-year contract that council approved on July 22nd, 2008. And so, we're simply following our negotiated and agreed-upon contract with the city employees.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Mitnick, anything further?
Mr. Mayor, with a council clarification, it's not for all city employees. It is for the general employees represented by the Thousand Oaks City Employees Association, the general full-time and part-time employees, not for managers or executives. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you very much. Pleasure of the council. Motion to approve? Move approval? Have a motion to approve? Comments to the motion? Please vote.
Motion carries 4-1. Councilmember Bill de la Peña dissenting.
Thank you. Item M, Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Gil. This item deals with the city council, in his terms, salary adjustment. I tend to agree with Mr. Kidway, it's more like a stipend. Normally, this item goes by, and I don't comment on it, but I think in the situation the city is in and what many, many residents are facing with what we're looking at at the local level with furloughs here in Thousand Oaks, state level and nationally, while it is certainly a symbolic gesture, given the stipend that council receives in relation to the salary that the regular employees receive, I do believe it's incumbent upon us to lead from the front. And so, without making any bigger deal on it than that, I'm going to move that council not move forward with pay raises for this particular year.
Okay. Comments to the motion? Mrs. Bill de la Peña?
I wholeheartedly embrace this motion. I've voted against the salary increase for the last six or seven years, and it is actually quite proper and appropriate to do that in these times. Also, wanted to mention that, yes, furloughs and other tight economic times that we have here in order to save money, one of the reasons why I voted against initially the $1 million expenditure which provides for the cost of living adjustment for the city employees. But I do welcome this particular motion, and I will certainly endorse that.
Thank you. Additional comments? Or motion? If being none, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item H. Item H is change from a public hearing to a staff report. This will be, the report will be by Assistant City Man, or City Public Works Director, Jay Spurgeon, supported by Mr. John Adams. Mr. Spurgeon, where are you?
I am here.
There you are. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This item is on the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall Street Parking and Modifications Project. There's two actions tonight to continue to move this project forward. And for those of our viewing public that aren't familiar, the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall is located between Thousand Oaks Boulevard and the 101 freeway west of Westlake Boulevard. There's about nine property owners out there, and it is the world's largest auto mall in that there are over two dozen automobile makes available to the public there. By way of background, again, this is primarily a review for city council. One of the issues out there that this project will address is insufficient parking. There's about 600 existing spaces within Public Rights Way, about 300 additional spaces on-site throughout the various parcels, but there are well over 1,000 employees that work in the auto mall. So, clearly, there's a shortage of available parking. This is a topic that staff and the auto mall dealers have been working on for a number of years, probably almost 10 years. Another issue that the project will address is the dated and tired appearance of city streets, the landscaping signage, and the need for pedestrian amenities so that it's a more pedestrian-friendly environment as well as Wayfinder signs. And these photos just show, again, even in the down economy, when you do drive out there during the day, there are very few parking spaces available. The existing freeway sign was permitted and installed about 1993, so again, this is fairly dated. And these photos here, again, just depict the, again, tired, dated appearance of the landscaping throughout the area. Back in November, city council took several actions on the project, including approving the preliminary design concept. We looked at several alternatives. Alternative number four was selected by the auto mall dealers and staff and approved by council. This provides for additional 364 spaces within Public Rights Way, at a cost of about $8.5 million. Also, council adopted a resolution initiating a code amendment to update the zoning for the auto mall to accommodate the project design features. Another resolution was adopted initiating proceedings for a community facilities district. I'll mention a little bit later on that we do not need to proceed with that anymore. And an amendment to the deposit agreement between the city and the auto mall dealers, continuing our financial partnership with them to fund jointly the design costs for the project as we move forward. Also, council directed staff to form a citizens' ad hoc advisory committee. Tonight, one of the items we're asking you to approve is the final design contract with AECOM of Ventura. This is the civil engineering firm that performed the preliminary design phase. Cost is $550,000, including a 10% contingency. And again, as we move forward, the city and the auto mall dealers will be sharing the cost 50-50. Attachment three on page seven of the council packet gives you a roster of proposed advisory committee, ad hoc advisory committee members. And the goals for this committee is, again, to provide input to the design group for the various elements of the project design, landscaping, pedestrian amenities, signage, including the freeway sign. I think we put together a very good cross-section of the community here, including a couple of former city council members, members of homeowners associations throughout the city, business representatives, also from the chamber, the park district, COU, and interested citizens. Following the November meeting, we met with the auto dealers, the staff met with auto dealers in December, and we were able to come up with a cost-share formula for the final design costs. costs that resulted in 100 percent participation. All the dealers, all property owners are in support and are participating as we go forward. Seven of the dealers opted to go ahead and pay cash for their share, and one of the dealers, the property owner of the former Courtesy Chevrolet property, has requested the city front their, their share, and they will, we will be negotiating a agreement with them to cover that, and that's the second item that we're asking approval, is for staff to negotiate such an agreement with that property owner. So because we have the significant, majority of costs that are being paid for now by the auto mall dealers, then we do not need to proceed with a community facilities district to fund the design costs at this time. A quick rundown on the project costs, you can see from this slide, again, the total cost, a little over 8.5 million. And we are proposing to phase the construction in two phases, to help, help with the funding concerns as we get closer to construction, as well as minimize impacts of construction to the operations of the various auto dealers. Schedule is shown here. Most of this year, we'll be completing the final design, the municipal code amendment, working with the advisory committee, and later this year, have plans and specs ready to go out for construction bids. After we receive the bids, there'll be a decision point for the auto dealers to decide if they want to go forward with construction, and go ahead and assess themselves, and form a community facilities district at that time, in early January, early 2011, so that the, their share of construction costs can be financed over a period of time. And then, construction ultimately, if we move forward, should be done by the end of 2011. So again, our recommendations authorize staff to negotiate an agreement with the Courtesy Chevrolet property owner for their share, and approve the final design contract with the engineering firm. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. Before we get into questions of staff, I do have a speaker, and so this is no longer a public hearing, it's a staff report. I'll call that one speaker card. Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, resident of Nibery Park, and one of the new people on this committee, hopefully, will be meeting soon. I spoke in favor of this project. Unfortunately, I think, and I'm disappointed that no one from the auto mall is here, because I guess this is a done deal, and no input is needed, but I think having input and be able to answer questions and all that is always adds to the project, et cetera. It's also too slow. I just happen to have the staff report from November, and according to the schedule, this won't be done till construction phase is 2011, December 2011. I mean, so it's almost two years down, and this should have been done 10 years ago. I mean, there is a big problem, and it's, I mean, it's not a slow growth or any issue like that. It's very bad for business, and bad for, for, for the city. I would like to again reiterate, Mayor, that the auto mall is not blighted. It is not blighted. And so, that is a fraud that the city is, is committing, but since the fraud is already there, and it's, it is, no one has challenged it, and so you have the money. So this is almost the best use for property taxes, which is also known as redevelopment agency taxes. This report does talk that there were four alternatives that were discussed, so I thought maybe the other alternative was not discussed. When I read this report, I was surprised that it's, the 8.5 million dollars has just one solution, which is angled parking. And it's 364 spaces. So I can guarantee you that that's not a solution. I mean, they will be back here again, and people will still be going round and round looking for a parking spot. What you really need is some community shared parking structure there. I mean, that's a real solution. I mean, and now we already are a city of parking structures, so I don't know why. And then, with the closure of Courtesy Chevrolet, I mean, the city should really be negotiating, trying to sell, and I, when I'm on the committee, I will try to raise this issue, is that buy some of the land, and you could not have just one parking structure, because it would be too much of a walk, but in two or three areas, come around and, and have that for the employees and vendors, and then leave the street parking and other parking, so that the people can go from dealership to dealership shopping, and that's what is needed. By the way, the total indebtedness of this agency is $263 million. So, $2, $3 million here and there, it's pocket change, right? Smile, Mayor, councilmember. It's a new year.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Ms. Bill de la Pena.
Thank you. I basically only have two questions. Question number one is regarding the ad hoc advisory committee. I see that there are three organizations that might actually overlap, because these three organizations have members who are members on the other two. Is there a way perhaps to provide a balance of equal number of business and equal number of homeowners or homeowners' associations? By perhaps picking one person who happens to be on the Business Roundtable, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, as well as the Chamber of Commerce?
Well, there will be representatives from each of those organizations on the ad hoc committee, and I think maybe what you're referring to is the Westlake Joint Board and some of the other East End HOAs have, have overlapping representation?
No. Overlapping representation is the Business Roundtable, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, as well as the Chamber. There are members who are actually members of all three organizations, and I'm wondering whether we can have an equal number of residents slash homeowners' associations, as well as business representation?
And frankly, we could add additional business representatives to the ad hoc committee. Sure, we could do that.
My, my concern is that we may not have enough residents or homeowners' associations. That, you don't think that that will be the case? You will make sure that there is an equal number?
Well, as, as the, as you can see from the roster, page seven of the packet, there are actually significantly more residential members that are proposed than, than business members.
Very good. I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you very much. And the second question is, has the city appropriated $2 million for this entire project? Is that something that is capped, or would it be, is it possible that in the future, we may need have to expend more?
Well, I think that's, that would be up to council in the future. Right now, the budget appropriation is 2 million.
Thank you.
Additional questions of staff? Just an observation from looking at the roster and being aware of it, a lot of the people that have these memberships in these different associations, they are in fact all residents of the city of Thousand Oaks. They do own homes. They belong to these organizations. They also belong as, as membership to the homeowners' association, so sometimes we forget that business owners, they're not in a vacuum, they're residents of the city, and they do own homes in the city, so. Yes, Mr. Spurgeon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to also mention, and I was remiss in my introduction, introductory comments, that there are representatives from the auto mall in the audience here tonight.
Thank you. Further questions? Pleasure of the council? Dr. Glancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As previous speaker mentioned, this is a great business decision that should have been made many years ago. Oftentimes, when council makes business, uh, decisions, they're chastised for it, but it is the real thing to do, is it's something that's most appropriate. And in tough economic times, often it's, it's necessary to infuse money into the business entities, so that we can flourish a bit. God knows we need to. So it'd be my pleasure to move approval of points one, two, and three, and four.
Thank you. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Consideration of Participation, California First Clean Energy Program. Would the city clerk please open the public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by laws, open to consider agenda item 8B, consideration of participation in California First Clean Energy Program, AB 811. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and we have no speaker cards.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Staff report, Mr. Adams, Finance Director, and Mr. Watkins. Mr. Adams?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, I'm gonna make a quick presentation on what you will be doing tonight as far as adopting a resolution authorizing city of Thousand Oaks participation in the California First Clean Energy Program. Just for a little background, back in July of 2008, the governor signed Assembly Bill 811, which authorized cities, county, cities within Californian counties to form assessment districts to help finance green energy projects, and actually, energy efficiency, water conservation projects. Just for background for council, as identified in the staff report, with the adoption or the approval of Assembly Bill 811, city staff did research, looked at other programs, two of the more prominent programs, one is in the city of Palm Desert, and the other one is in Sonoma County. The city waiting for other programs to be started. One of the major programs that has come out since is actually California First. During the summer of 2009, was announced that California Communities, which is a partner with the California League of Cities, was developing a program. In November of 2009, which was two months ago, they actually had a presentation out at the county offices, in which staff attended. Pilot program under the development and monitored by California Communities, as noted. It will help finance renewable energy and energy-efficient projects. Participation is voluntary, and property owners determine the types of projects they wish to finance and install, and property owners will be repaying these projects over a 20-year period on their property tax bill. County of Ventura for the city, for County of Ventura will be the lead agency for Ventura, and recommends approval by all the local cities. To date, all Ventura County cities have signed letters of commitment. Cities and counties must opt into the program for their residents and businesses to have access to the program. Again, for us to opt in, the deadline is the 18th of this month. And of course, here's a benefit of the program. Benefits to the property owners, voluntary program, as I mentioned earlier, hopefully will create new jobs, and in this environment, as far as having private loans to finance these energy efficiency projects, or to have home equity lines, may not be suitable. Other benefits, of course. City, this is some of the benefits for the city. One, we're not obligated to repay the bonds. This is simply an assessment on the property tax bill for the property owner and his responsibility of the property tax, or the property owner. California Communities will handle all of the assessment administration, bond issuance, bond administration costs, program management. Other benefits for the city, very low cost, the economy's the scale of going with a larger program will help us save money in the long run. And of course, it helps us meet our political environmental goals. Office is a responsibility. I mentioned the meeting in November. City Attorney's Office was actually the department that attended that meeting. Their role has been to review the resolution and review legal documents. Finance has been monitoring it from a financing aspect, and grant opportunities and public works will be involved in the outreach and marketing. And staff's recommendations to adopt the resolution. I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much, John. Questions of staff? Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Adams, the grant request is gonna be for $15 million, of which 5.5 will go to CalFirst for city-county cost to participants. But there's one and a half million going to grant admin and the steering committee, and 8 million to counties for coordination and marketing. Are those reasonable numbers for those endeavors?
In our review, it is, and if you're looking at, I think that there's 12 to 15 counties that are looking to participate. One of the concerns that the city had in looking at AB 811 was the administration of forming a project like this. And from a contract administration, from a financing aspect, they also talk about buying down the interest rates. Right now, in the municipal market, for an assessment district, the interest rates could be as high as 7% to 8%. And so part of that cost is to buy down the rates, make those more affordable. If you talk about program administration, people are gonna be doing projects and, and hiring contractors, and part of the financing, get reimbursed or have the program paid, is for verification and stuff. So based on the size of the program, it is reasonable. I think you talk about the steering committee, it mentions every city will have one representative at the steering committee and look at the overall program. California Communities was also the organization that organized Prop 1A securitization. They've done a lot of other programs. They have a great reputation with the League of California Cities, and I think that based on their past experience, it's, it's reasonable, and that's why we're sort of supportive of the program.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Appreciate it.
Additional questions of staff? There being nothing further, close the public hearing, and council discussion. Mr. Fox?
I'll move approval of the recommendation and adopt the attached resolution. The other thing is, I commented to the city manager, this is really a, a really, really good opportunity for many residents in the community. Things like double-pane glass, energy-efficient heating and air conditioning, these are things, according to the report, I think as the staff pointed out, where you can amortize that payment over 20 years, up to 20 years. And so, what I'd like to do is, as we've talked about in the past, do whatever marketing we can to let our residents know that this is something that's available to everyone in the community, regardless of income level or, or anything else. As I read the report, I was struck that there's probably a lot of people in the community that are not gonna be aware of it, and they're gonna go replace the windows in their home, or put a new heating and air conditioning system in, and they, they could have been eligible for this program. So, I don't know if we send it out with our water bills, or whatever it might be, but I'd like to see us do something like that, if there's no objection.
I was gonna make a comment from staff, and I'll let Mark talk most to this. That is really gonna be a focus of environmental services downstairs, and they're already putting together.
Okay.
Marketing, so I think that we've internally had a lot of discussion about making sure that the word does get out, and we have a high utilization of the program, and so we, I didn't go into it a lot.
All right, very good. All right, with that, I'm gonna move the staff recommendation and the resolution.
Motion, comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Item nine, department reports, we have none. Item 10, redevelopment agency report, acquisition of properties located at 1900 to 1948 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, 2.31 acres. Report by Mr. Prescott. Mr. Prescott?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and members of the redevelopment agency board. This is a recommendation from staff that the agency board authorize staff to move forward with the acquisition of what we commonly refer to as the Westside Properties. They are immediately adjacent to Dallas Drive and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, just to the west of the Civic Arts Plaza, known as 1900 through 1948 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard. About a year or so ago, the owners of the property, the four parcels, which comprise about 2.3 acres, announced that the properties were for sale, and may have And May of last year, the Board authorized staff to do some due diligence to investigate the properties. Later on, in the fall of the last year, the property owners specifically approached the Redevelopment Agency to determine whether the agency might be interested in purchasing these properties. The staff brought that matter to the Board, City Council, in closed session, and were authorized to commence negotiations. Those proceeded over a period of months with constant reporting back to council and obtaining the necessary authorizations to move forward. Those negotiations have now been completed, and we have a tentative agreement with the property owners to acquire the four properties for $3.25 million, $3,250,000. Part of the process was to have an independent outside appraiser look at the properties and give an estimated value. The purchase, proposed purchase price is within that range of values established by this outside appraiser. There are four existing businesses on the property. They are month-to-month leases at this point, and they do generate about $100,000 in income, rental income, per year. So that would flow to the agency while the businesses are there. At this point, Agency staff does not have any recommended plans for the redevelopment of those properties. This is, to some degree, a land banking program, and it is consistent with the five-year implementation plan that the Agency Board adopted a month or so ago. When the specific plan for the Civic Arts Plaza was developed in the late 1980s, and ultimately adopted by the City Council, there was a tension given to the properties to the west, actually, all the way down to Herb's Road. And there was a keen recognition that they bore a substantial relationship to the Civic Arts Plaza itself, and at some point would be desirable to have redeveloped in a manner compatible. With the Agency moving forward with the purchase at this time, that gives us the greater hand, really, in determining what kinds of uses will go there, how they will be planned to interact most effectively with the Civic Arts Plaza. So it's really an investment in the future of the downtown area of Thousand Oaks, and is consistent with the ongoing planning for Thousand Oaks Boulevard. So at this point, we're asking for Redevelopment Agency Board authority to move forward to complete the purchase as outlined in the recommendation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Before we start a discussion, we do have one speaker, we have two speaker cards on the item. One is Mr. Majorano, Bob Majorano, representing the owners of the property, who's available for questions. And the one speaker card we have is for Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, representing Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks, Newberry Park. Honorable Mayor, I would like to again draw your attention that I had sent yesterday a one-page, five questions on it, which has been excluded, and also, four pages earlier today, which might have been late. But that was sent yesterday, and it is not in the supplemental green packet. I would like to ask, why is it that you are selective, and there's nothing vulgar in this one-page? It's technical, the questions that has been, it has been excluded. I will try to quickly say that the first question I asked was that the Budget Task Force had recommended that your meetings separate the Redevelopment Agency agenda from the City Council agenda. And Councilmember Irwin had actually promised, told me two years ago, that the city manager had promised her that this would be done, and it does not cost any money. So why has this not been done, or when will it just be done? Also, a more important question is, why is this report on the agenda not as a public hearing? You discussed changing the earlier hearing from a public hearing, or something like that. I don't understand, did not understand that. But this is not a study session, or something. You are going to spend $3.2 million of taxpayer funds on, and it's on a report, a little report, and if the start had not done the newspaper article today, no one would really know about it. This item has been discussed on the agenda twice last year in closed session, but I believe it was, the agenda only talked about the price was under discussion. So my question is, is the policy had been set at length to buy these properties? Who set the policy? When was it set? I mean, mention was that 20, in 1988, and Mr. Shillo is here, he can expand on it, that maybe this was discussed, but it certainly was not to the point of making 3.2, which is all actually a $3.35 million purchase. And I'm very concerned if the council is meeting behind closed doors and discussing these things with the city manager, and when this comes, and that's one of the reasons it's five minutes to seven, and the meeting is almost over, that there's no discussion, because all the discussion is done in the city manager's office with one or two council members. In fact, at the December 14 meeting, the owner of the parcel next door, which has been the benefit of millions of dollars, said that a council member had asked Mr. Crusoe to submit the bid for it. So isn't that collusion, and keeping other business people out of the prospect? I would like to find out who the council member was that asked Mr. Crusoe to come forward. It's interesting, in closing, since three minutes is not enough, you should really give five minutes when you're spending taxpayer money and wasting it like this. Thank you for letting me speak. I hope you will not vote yes on this.
Thank you. Questions of Mr. Prescott? No questions? Pleasure to the council. Mrs. Irwin?
Thank you. I am going to recommend approval of staff recommendation, authorize the Redevelopment Agency to execute all documents necessary to purchase the properties located on 19, at 1900 to 1948 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard by the Redevelopment Agency, and approve the Redevelopment Agency budget appropriation for $3.25 million. That, you know, we have, we've had a long-time goal of developing the downtown area, and the area right next to the Civic Arts Center, as most of you know, is a big mishmash of different types of buildings. And we found, I see this as a real opportunity for the council, the residents, the city to take some control over what happens at that property. And we're, we don't have something specific right now that we're looking at, or at least I don't have anything specific that we're looking at. But it's a real opportunity in this depressed real estate market to use redevelopment dollars, and residents need to understand very clearly that there is a difference between general fund money and redevelopment dollars. This is exactly the type of project that we are supposed to be spending redevelopment dollars on. I think it's a great use of it. It's a great opportunity, and if we didn't jump at this opportunity, and years down the road, we end up right next to our very expensive Civic Arts building with warehouses, and who knows what type of foot massage places. You know, we would be, we would really be looking back at this as a big missed opportunity. So as I said, I am going to recommend the staff recommendation, recommend the staff recommendations.
Thank you, Mrs. Irwin. Comments to the motion? Mrs. Bildel, opinion?
Mr., Dr. Glancy had raised his hand as well, but that's, that's okay.
I'll work on both ways here. I just
Okay. I, this obviously, as stated in the staff report, was discussed in closed session. I am not supporting this particular move. Although the funds being used to pay for the parcels, $3.25 million is not from our general fund, it is nonetheless taxpayer dollars, in that the Redevelopment Agency uses dollars paid for property taxes, taxpayers paying property taxes, steering that money away from, for example, operational costs for schools, to the Redevelopment Agency. And in this day and age, when we have a very difficult financial situation, to where we're doing furloughs, for example, I have a hard time taking advantage of this opportunity, as it has been described, simply because I prefer that the redevelopment dollars should be used for more affordable housing, because we have two mobile home parks, and residents will be, are about to lose the roof over their heads. And I, my priority list appears to look different, and I prefer to provide a roof over people's heads first, before investing money in a property from which we don't have a vision just yet. Nonetheless, I do appreciate why this move to purchase it, the parcels, will go forward for Discovery Center or Art Center, but not in this day and age. I really have a hard time steering redevelopment dollars, property tax dollars, to areas that I personally don't consider terribly blighted at all. And so therefore, I will not support this motion.
Thank you. Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. I'd like to touch on something that Councilmember Irwin brought up, and that was control. Having that property would give us an element of control over what goes in there, will give us a great deal of control of what goes in there. It's fairly tempting to think that even without our ownership, we could still control what goes in, by virtue of the fact that we approve applications. Well, truth be known, that really doesn't give us as much control as you would want. There are a lot of things that can go in there that meet the zoning and other requirements that would be just as onerous as what was suggested. Warehouses, storage lots, foot massage parlors, you know, there's an endless list of what could go in there that we would have absolutely no control over. If we have any kind of thoughts at all about developing this part of the Thousand Oaks as a central core part of the city, then we have to take control of it. We have to develop it and let it be developed in a way that's consistent with what our goals are. And to just leave it hanging in the breeze, to be grabbed up by someone, and God knows what goes in there, is, I think, ludicrous and irresponsible. I would like to emphasize that redevelopment dollars are not property tax dollars. They cannot be used for schools. There are a lot of things they cannot be used for. And it's also, interestingly enough, and recommended, very highly recommended, that they not be used for residential interests. So, you know, that'll be an interesting point, is it later, as time comes up. Anyway, for these reasons, I am very pleased to support the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Glancy. Any additional comment? Mr. Mitnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just some comments from, responses to some comments. This is fundamental, basic, bread-and-butter redevelopment. Redevelopment agencies up and down the state do every day. In fact, it is exactly the type of thing you should be doing with the redevelopment money. We hear reference to blight. Whether or not a property or properties are believed to be blighted is irrelevant. The Redevelopment Agency was formed at a time, and it created project areas when there was blight, or whether blight findings were made to comply with state law. We have had successful redevelopment project areas here in Thousand Oaks, and much of the blight that existed at one time has been eradicated, and largely due to the efforts of the Redevelopment Agency. So redevelopment agencies exist over decades, and they continue to work even when blight is removed. And a big part of the effort is to sustain and maintain what you have, to ensure that blight does not come back. So the blight issue that we hear about is, to some extent, a moot point, if not to a large extent. There is no loss to the school district, or schools in general, when you establish a redevelopment agency. The state does backfill. And in fact, because of the success of redevelopment agencies, when tax increment goes up, there's more money available to schools, because we have the tow pass agreements, which I think come to, the annual tow pass payments come to council in the next meeting, or one of the upcoming meetings. So I want to point out that the Thousand, or the Canal Valley Unified School District has benefited significantly to the tune of tens of millions of dollars because of the Redevelopment Agency. They are our partner, the district is our partner, and they continue to be very supportive of the efforts of the Redevelopment Agency. With respect to mobile home parks, we are working on a, the Redevelopment Agency has provided hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to mobile home park tenants who are income-eligible, in terms of low-income loans, which often become grants. I want to say a million and a half dollars, I think the number's even higher. And we are working on developing a program to help those mobile home park tenants who may be displaced by some of these closures, park closures that are coming up. But again, they have to be income-eligible. And also, the Redevelopment Agency does indeed provide money for affordable housing projects. 20% of the tax increment that's generated needs to go for affordable housing, and we have one of the, if not the, most successful redevelopment agencies in Ventura County in terms of money actually spent on affordable housing, and units produced, and families assisted. So I just wanted to point those out. This is a great opportunity for the community, one that will pay dividends many years to come. Thank you.
Ms. Bildel, opinion?
Thank you. One correction that was not made is that redevelopment dollars are revenues deriving from property tax dollars paid for by the taxpayers here in Thousand Oaks.
Any additional comments from, okay. Before I ask for the vote, I'm going to support the motion, because I view this as a, as a major, significant investment in the future of our city. Since the incorporation in 1964, the vision of creating a downtown area, a core area, where our residents could come and recreate, and be entertained, and what have you, this area, from Herb's Road to Canal School Road and around it, was always viewed in that light. And currently, as you talk to representatives from other cities throughout California, the timing, their timing was terrible, because development happened, and they have been in a catch-up mode for years. A recent story on local Los Angeles television about Culver City, going back and now trying to recapture, reacquire, and repurchase properties in certain areas to try and rehabilitate them and build them up. And they're paying, they were paying a whole new expanded value for these developed properties. We are, with this action, ahead of the curve. We're getting it. It's not going to be blighted with undesirable, unnecessary and undesirable business elements for this zone. This zone is intended to be the beginning of, with the Civic Arts Plaza, with the lakes, with the Gardens of the World, an educational, recreation, entertainment venue, even things like redesigning more accessibility to the parking structure for these facilities. Those things can now be done, and be done in a very careful and very thoughtful manner. We probably will not see the result of our actions tonight, but future planners, future office holders, future staff members, my feeling is, will be very appreciative that this council was forward-thinking enough to take advantage of this opportunity and acquire these parcels, so that eventually, that dream of the development of a social center for this community can be realized. With those thoughts in mind, please vote.
Motion carries 4-1. Councilmember Bildel, opinion dissenting.
Item 11, Committee Commission Board Reports, we have none. Council issues, recommendations, 12A, 12A1. That will be mine, and it's on the League of California Cities Leadership Assignments, and League Leaders Meeting, November 18 through the 20th. I did attend the League Leaders Meeting in Anaheim. I will be, I have assumed, and will be attending my first meeting, the Chair of the League of California Cities Public Safety Committee. The primary focus of these discussions at the Anaheim meeting were the League leaders with the new leaders of the divisions, departments, policy committees, and caucuses of the League to discuss goals for the upcoming year. The primary focus for this year for the Public Safety Committee will be protect local control and funding of vital local services, support reform of the structure, governance, management, and financing of state government, and promote economic stimulus, infrastructure, investment and financing of state government, and promote economic stimulus, infrastructure, investment, business development, and job creation. There's more detail in the staff report. The motion is to receive and file the report. Any questions? Mr. Fox?
Just a quick comment. Want to congratulate you, Mr. Gillett, on your selection as the Chair of the Public Safety Committee. Clearly, your background in law enforcement and as an executive manager and your long terms of service in local government, I think will serve the League well, and so just our congratulations for the great job you do representing us in a variety of forums. But, and I understand you're also the Chair of the National Public Safety Committee.
That's correct.
National. So two important capacities, and we appreciate your service. I'll certainly support the motion to approve.
Thank you very much. For the comments, please vote.
Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you. Item 12A2, League of California Cities, Channel County Division, meeting December 11, 2009. Mr. Glancy, you want to comment on that?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. It was the mayor's and my pleasure to attend this meeting up in Santa Barbara. It was Channel County's Division of the League. I have to say, it's a great opportunity for us to meet and discuss things with regional members of the League, and I think it's through relationships like this that we work more effectively. But one of the things that came up, Board of Directors' report listed three things that are the goals for the League for this year. One is protect local control. Two is support restructure of state government. And three, support economic stimulus support for all cities. And of course, that's really been the hot topic for about the last year, year and a half. But those are the three goals for the League. Guest speaker was our very own Tim Giles, City Attorney's Office, who's now City Attorney in Galata. And he spoke of the mobile home case that Galata thus far is not doing well with. Judge ruled that mobile home park residents who sold their units, they have a rent controller agreement up there. They sell your unit, they've been getting elevated prices or higher prices for their unit, and the owner of the park thought that any profits were really due to him, should come to him rather than to the residents. And this judge found in favor of the applicant or the mobile home park owner. So it's been appealed, and I think it was a district or circuit court that heard it a panel, and they want, it's been appealed to be heard by a full panel. So we'll see how far it goes and see what happens with it. But it was, it was good meeting, a very good evening. And our mayor won a very large basket. I recommend that we receive the report.
Thank you. If I'm not mistaken, Dr. Glancy, and the city attorney can correct me, the amount of money that we're talking about in the Galata case, the claim against the city of Galata is 28 million? 25 or 28 million dollars that the park owners claim against the, against the city of Galata. And we can look for this replicating all the way through the state now as these decisions come down. So anyhow, it's a motion to receive and file. Any questions on the motion? Please vote.
Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you. Item 13, city manager, follow-up on request from the public.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no additional items. With respect to follow-up by way of upcoming items, I'd like to remind the council and the public that on Monday, January 18, the city offices will be closed for Martin Luther King Jr.'s holiday. The next council meeting will be on Tuesday, January 26. At this point in time, we are looking at two public hearings. One is a code amendment, excuse me, of the municipal code, dealing with encroachments onto city and COSCA-owned land. And then the second hearing anticipates dealing with the tree pruning permit user v. adoption. One will have the agenda relatively light with the main item, with the main entree, if you will, is the finance director will give a report on the year-end financial numbers for fiscal year 2008, 2009, the year that went through June 30, 2009. We will tell you how we did for that year and what the implications are. In a couple months, or next month, I think it is, we'll do a mid-year report for this current fiscal year. Also, on the consent calendar for January 26, I made reference to it earlier, the annual tow pass project list. This is the Thousand Oaks pass-through agreement from the redevelopment agency to the school district for the hundreds of thousands of dollars in projects that the district will receive from the redevelopment, money, the school district will receive from the redevelopment agency for capital projects. That'll be on the consent calendar. We do that every year at this time. That's it by way, city manager, comments? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mitnick. Item 14, closed session. The city attorney call, announce the closed session, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and members of the public. Council will be adjourning into closed session. There's a number of items. One, potential case for anticipated litigation, significant exposure litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 subsection B. There are three different real property negotiations, all of them pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Under negotiation for each of them is price and terms. The first is Autumn Mall Drive to 101 Freeway. The assessor parcel numbers are listed. Thousand Oaks, California. It's the agency negotiators are Jay Spurgeon, Deputy Public Works Director, and Amy Albano, City Attorney. Negotiating party for the property owners is Loretta Brendan. The second property is again Autumn Mall Drive adjacent to the 101 Freeway. Negotiators for the agency is Jay Spurgeon, Deputy Public Works Director, and Amy Albano. Negotiating parties for the property owner is Dollinger Westlake Associates. The third real property is at 485 Kathleen Drive, Thousand Oaks. The agency negotiators are Jay Spurgeon, W. Deputy Public Works Director, and Chris Norman, Assistant City Attorney, and Tom Pease, Engineering Division Manager. Negotiating parties for property owners, Cecilia Bunyan. Under negotiate, we already did that, sorry. The next one is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Siegel versus City of Thousand Oaks, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 subsection A. The next case is also conference with legal counsel on existing litigation under the existing Government Code section, and that's 1200 Newberry LLC versus City of Thousand Oaks, as well as the City of Thousand Oaks versus 1200 Newberry. And there will not be a need to report anything out from those closed sessions.
Thank you, Mrs. Albano. And before we call for adjournment, I'd like to go back to item 13, to the city manager for just a minute on a couple of items. Value of the time, effort, and energy that we've spent lobbying and walking the halls. Mr. Mitnick?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I did do a memo to you pointing out that, I think it was last week, Kenny, I think it was on Friday, that Congressman Elton Gallagher had sent some of his representatives to meet with us. We met with Richard Maru, who is his Chief of Staff in Washington, and Brian Miller, who is his Chief of Staff out here in Thousand Oaks in the district office. And we went over, discussed a variety of issues, but they did share with us that the city will be receiving an additional $500,000 grant from the federal government dealing with the 10123 freeway interchange. So that's $500,000 on top of the $500,000 that the congressman previously obtained for us. It's a million dollars total. It's a $50 million project. But our lobbyists in Washington and our persistent efforts are indeed paying off. We also got $6.5 million from the federal stimulus money, as we've shared with council before, to help with the design work. So every little bit helps. We will be going to council, and myself and Nina Labor, our legislative manager, will go to Washington in March and continue lobbying. We will also be with the Ventura County Transportation Commission Executive Director Darren Kettle. So the mayor asked me to point this out, but our congressman has really been going to bat for us, and we'll continue to work with he and his staff and others in Washington and Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. I think a point of interest, as we move forward on the finalization of the Federal Highway Appropriations Bill, it's a five-year bill. We're in for 70 million for the 23101 interchange. And every one of these, well, to me, $500,000 is a lot of money, but in the realm that we're dealing in, each time we get one of those, it's another arrow in our quiver when we go forward to the committee that's negotiating and dealing with setting up the new five-year, 500 million, or five-year federal highway appropriation bill. And according to everyone that we're talking to, we're on the right track, we're doing the right things. And hopefully, the final outcome will be to get those, get that project approved, get it built, and get more of those commuter cars out of our neighborhoods and what have you. So, okay, at this time, this is something that was started some time ago in the adjournment, and I want to specifically express my appreciation to Mr. Fox. We do, we do remember, and we are grateful for some of those people that have gone before us. Frank Shillo, former council member, former mayor, former county supervisor, happens to be in the audience tonight. This is the time of year when we recognize one of your longtime colleagues, who's referred to as the father of Thousand Oaks, Mr. Alex Fiori. We will adjourn in Mr. Fiori's name. Mr. Fox, would you please handle that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we begin our new year, and we look forward to the many challenges that we have, it's important to think about where we came from. And it's certainly difficult, if not impossible, to have that conversation without remembering truly the father of Thousand Oaks, our mere emeritus, Alex Fiori. The reason that I brought this item to the council when Alex died in 2002 was, there are very few people in local government, I would suggest, in our nation's history that have served with such distinction over such a prolonged period of time. Alex served on our original city council in 1964. He served for 30 consecutive years, seven terms, five years as mayor, obviously never lost an election. At a time when politics was more simple in Thousand Oaks, certainly, but no less challenging. Alex was known for many things, but I think first and foremost was his willingness and his ability to listen. It is common to many of us that knew Alex, but many who may be new to the community should certainly be familiar with the Janes Mall. Alex would set up a card table almost every Saturday of the year. And he would do everything from your tax returns, because it was recognized he was a bit of a financial genius. In fact, I would suggest that the financial stability that we enjoy here today, in part, was because of Alex Fiori. He was Vice President of Finance for Rock and Dine, and he certainly brought his financial expertise to a new budding city. But from tax returns to crossword puzzles, he would sit there and meet residents for hours at a time, every Saturday. There was few Saturdays that he wasn't there. He wasn't just somebody that sat at a card table, though. He brought a professional expertise to our city council, certainly in the early days. And things that we enjoy here today, I think it's important to point out, thousands, maybe tens of thousands of people every year enjoy the Wildwood Mesa. Alex Fiori had a big part in preserving the Wildwood Mesa. The zoning requirements that we have to protect our open space, Alex certainly was one of the forefathers of that program. Alex was an outstanding negotiator. It's appropriate that we have Frank here tonight. It's too many, too many accomplishments to list here tonight, but Alex was one of those pioneers who negotiated a deal for developers to pay to build schools before it became law, before it became state law. We have a couple of facilities here that are named in Alex's honor, Fiori Fields and the Teen Center, appropriately so. We have an outstanding city. In our 46-year history, certainly Alex Fiori is a neat reason for that. And in concluding, I think it's important to point out that Alex didn't do it by himself. He was supported by his wife Katie, who still lives here in the community, and his children, Tom, Rick, and Norma, and the part that the entire Fiori family played in making Thousand Oaks what it is today. And so we adjourned tonight in honor of our mere emeritus, Alex Fiori.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Mr. Fox. At this time, we will adjourn to our next regular meeting on January 26, 2010. We're adjourned.